The time is six o'clock. Should we start or should we wait?
We can start, however Commissioner Schaefer will not be able to take any, participate in any voting until she gets sworn in. And I know that Councilmember Matias is coming. So we would have to go back to their swearing in, oath of office. So if you'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:01?
We'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:01. Meeting of the Commission on Culture and the Arts. Agenda item number one, call to order. I just did. Oh, roll call's after, sorry. Things, I think things got-
No, pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Roll call. And Commissioner Matias is on his way in. Chair Weiss, he is excused absent. Vice Chair Vidor-
Present.
Commissioner Allen-
Present.
Commissioner Hernandez-
Present.
Commissioner Miller, not here. Commissioner Thorson-
Present.
Commissioner Schaefer-
Here.
We have a quorum with five present. Thank you. Commissioner Schaefer, if you would join Councilmember Matias?
Okay. Yes, I should. I-
I.
State your name.
Mooneye Schaefer.
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend-
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California-
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies-
Against all-
Enemies.
Enemies.
Foreign and domestic-
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance-
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States-
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California-
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And that I take this obligation freely-
And that I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion-
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge-
And that I will well and faithfully-
Discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Amen. Pardon my tardiness for a few minutes. Apologize. Twenty-second? Twenty-two? September, yep. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And when you take your seat, we would like to, to, thank you. Have you say a few words, introduce yourself to the commission?
I'm excited to be here. I really believe in the culture and the arts, so this is a good place for me. I, I just got, I've been a project manager. IT, that's been kind of my focus. Primarily in the web space. So I just got done with the Solano County website redesign. That was a two and a half year project. My, my education is, I started out in electronics. I was electronic technologist for years. And then I moved into, I got my degree in mass communications and then a master's in multimedia. But I've been in the arts since I was a kid. It's a family thing. I paint. I got into video and won a couple of awards for some videos that, that I did. And so art is kind of a part of my life. And so I'm really happy to be here. And culturally, I'm an African-American woman. So the culture is, the culture part is very important to me. And I'm seeing Vallejo as, as a place where we can do a lot around this cultural arts scene. I mean, it's the most diverse city in the country. So there's a lot of culture to play with here. And then the arts, I'm, I'm really looking at expanding the purview of arts in Vallejo from not just the visual arts and music arts to digital arts and multimedia. So that's my space.
Thank you.
And if the commission want to, I know you met everyone, but one minute, introduce yourselves and tell a little bit about yourself. One minute.
So I'm Dahlia Vidor. I run the Vallejo Shakespeare in the Park here in Vallejo. I'm also on the board of the Neil and Historical Museum in town. And I've been on this commission for eight years, nine years, something like that, since its reinception. And then I also work for the city in the Planning and Development Department.
Thank you.
I'm Chris Thorson. I taught art at an arts high school in Napa for years and years and now am going back to graduate school and getting my master's in mental health for counseling, or masters in counseling. And plan to become a licensed therapist with an emphasis on art. And I am also a sculptor and painter.
Briefly, if I may through the chair, just FYI, for, just for clarity's sake, if we can speak directly into the microphones, that way everyone online can hear as well. Thank you.
Don't make me use my theater voice, Manny. Okay. Hi, Trevor Allen, nice to meet you. BA UCLA, MFA from SF, San Francisco State University, creative writing, English, playwriting, a culture fiend. I've been on since the reinception of the commission, so eight years. I will be going off in December, so please have someone else come in and do, do the work. I'm so proud of what a lot of people have done. So it's just been a pleasure and a privilege to be a part of this commission. There's some old folks here, not just folks that have been here for a while, more than happy to answer any questions you might have. And I encourage you to push forward for the arts and culture in Vallejo. The diversity is amazing and I really, we talk about the, the work, well, we'll talk about it later, but there's so much, dare I say, potential. But there's a lot of things that we can do together. And even after, after I'm off the commission, I'm more than happy to help. So I'd like to volunteer as well.
I'm Andrea Hernandez. I've been on the commission since 2019. I, I'm part of the Filipino community. I do a lot of stuff for the Pistas de Ayon Festival that we hold every year. It's getting bigger and bigger. And with that comes a lot of the artists and things that we need, that we combine into our festival. But yeah, that's, that's what I do. I'm here to try to help make sure that the community also looks at the cultural organizations too, along with the artists.
The, what is it? What did you?
Are you speaking to the mic, please?
I thought I turned it on. The reinception, when did that happen?
About eight years ago.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mooneye. Welcome. Next, we have Communications, the City Council Liaison Report.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you as always for the opportunity to report out. As you know, in the month of August, we usually go dark at the council level. We only had one meeting and it was to vote to provide operational gap funding for the Broadway project. We are still working through some stuff to get that project online and start to get folks into that housing project. And so, once we're in a position to do so, I'm sure we'll be sharing more information out with the community. But our goal has been to really address homelessness head on as best as we can, given the resources that we have in the community, and also prioritize public safety, which is something you've guys have heard me talk about the entire year. And to that end, tomorrow, we've got two major items that are going to be voted on. One at the board level, at the county board level, the other one at the city council level. The first one is the sheriff's contract. They will finally be taking a final vote on that contract tomorrow. If you guys want to tune into that meeting, I believe it gets underway at 9:00 AM, 10:00 AM, 9:00 AM? Thank you. So if you guys want to tune into that, please do so. That will again be to have the sheriff's office provide supplemental law enforcement assistance to VPD in 2026. And even though there has been a delay in getting this contract to the finish line, they're still projecting to go online if they approve the contract on January 1st, 2026. So that is something that's going to be voted on in the morning. And then in the evening, and another item that took us probably well over a year, if not two years, to get across the finish line, and that was to get security guards to also provide supplemental assistance to VPD. And part of the things that have been discussed in terms of how the security guards are going to be deployed is to either have them used as a deterrent or have them deployed at commercial districts across the city. There's been a lot of concerns raised by residents, burglaries, I mean, it runs the gamut in terms of the crimes we've dealt with. But that is another action we're taking in addition to the security towers, in addition to the funding that went into GBRD, in addition to the recruitment and retention plan for officers that we're taking to really make a dent in addressing crime in our community and in also making our city safer, using other means and other alternative approaches. And so that's what's on the queue tomorrow. We're also going to be looking at what are additional projects we want to assign to city staff for the rest of the year and what does goal setting look like for 2026? So we've got some big discussions taking place tomorrow evening. And then the thing I wanted to just share as it relates to this commission is, and I'm going to start with Commissioner Allen. I hope I still have two months left in the tank to encourage you to reapply for another term. And part of the reason why I'm sharing that is because I know many commissioners have expressed for a very long time that you haven't necessarily felt like you've been able to, like, get things done through the commissions. And actions that I've taken this year to change that dynamic has been making, and I'll use economic development as an example, we now have Visit Vallejo reporting into the Economic Development Commission. We now have the Solano Economic Development Corporation also reporting into the Economic Development Commission on a quarterly basis. And so we want to really rely on you guys to help us figure out some of the things that we haven't been able to figure out in a long time. And so for those folks who may be thinking about leaving, I would say, just give us a chance. We've got just eight months in the tank and we're just trying to do all the things at once. And when it comes to the commission itself, you guys have just amazing experience across the board. I've had an opportunity to make two referrals for appointment this year. And just going through the interview process, Schaefer, Ms. Vidor, I mean, the interviews were exceptional, the experience, just like, it was amazing to just see through. And so I say that to say, there's so much that you guys can do without breaking any Brown Act violations, like, to improve your community and to use your skillsets and your experience to move our city forward, that I would just encourage you to, like, not just wait on this meeting every month, but figure out, how can I have this conversation with this other commissioner and move this item forward? Because there's just a lot of talent and the only way we move forward as a city is if we're tapping into all of that talent that we have in each of our commissions and at the council level. So I'm going to close with that. It's something that I repeat often because I firmly believe it. And I kid you not, that Solano County website looks exceptional. Job well done. I had a problem going to that website because I just felt like we were stuck in time and you did a masterful job. Well, yes. Whatever your role was, thank you. And it really means a lot. And that's the sort of stuff we need here in Vallejo. And that's the way I think each and every one of you can contribute in the ways that you know you can contribute to our community. So that's my report out. I'm more than happy to answer any questions you have.
Through the chair, Madam Chair. First of all, thank you. One term for four years and then re-upping, getting another four years is wonderful. And again, I really appreciate it. We'll talk. I still got two more months. So the usual questions, these are softballs, we don't have to highlight them now, but gift policy, the loan gift policy and the, well, the gift policy for artworks. I understand it's still in the city attorney's purview, still in the city attorney's office. As a lot of these things have come up and there's been this sort of like, whoa, we don't really have a policy for that. And the answer is, well, we don't yet because dot, dot, dot. And again, I don't want to sound like a broken record, and I'm old enough to remember records. The idea that this is sort of scratched, we keep coming back to this. Each time it's, well, we keep pushing this down the road. So it isn't that a lot of our predecessors haven't done a lot of work on this. They have. And I don't want anybody to be encouraged, discouraged. I do want people to be encouraged to make change. So all I'm asking is loan policy, gift policy, and the, the big elephant in the room, funding. And I would pass that back over to Vice Chair Vidor because she has trumpeted this. But I also wanted to make sure that, that we have to keep laser focused on this. What the city is doing with the police is wonderful. What the city is doing with the abating homelessness and the unhoused is wonderful. This commission, because we focus on culture and the arts and, and how we can bring ourselves together to make change. When change isn't made, and it's because it's just waiting for someone to finish the paperwork, that can be discouraging, but I'm not discouraged. I'm just pointing out each time that we don't have an answer to this. So I'm just trying to keep this on your radar. But again, thank you so much, council member.
Chair, am I able to respond?
Yes.
Thank you. So Commissioner Allen, just a couple of quick responses there. I hear you and I've followed up with the city attorney just in the past month around some of these, like, items that are in the queue. What she has shared with me, when I spoke to City Attorney Neb, is that some of the recommendations that this body made are, have to be sorted out because there's some legal issues sort of attached to them. And I couldn't really get to the bottom of what those legal issues are and how do we sort of tease through them or parse them out. But what I think we can do, and this sort of directly leads into the conversation we're having tomorrow, is there's this big bucket of work out of all of the commissions, right? Like, I know Measure P passed, I don't know how many resolutions, they haven't made their way to the council. This commission has passed multiple recommendations and policies. Those have not made their way to the council. So there is this bucket that's unaccounted for, that's not even part of the staff report. And one of the things I'm going to ask tomorrow night is, how do we create the space to have those items come to us? Because otherwise, to your point, we're just waiting, 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 and it goes to the back of the queue because staff's orientation is to prioritize whatever we're, you know, directing at the council level. So I will ask that tomorrow night at the meeting and hopefully we can start to see some movement on that front. But I will make my colleagues aware and see if we can move those items forward. And then on the funding front, you guys know I made a referral that still hasn't made its way over to Measure P, but I do think we need to have a conversation with Measure P around it and I will be present for that. The Hewlett Foundation has made $500,000 available over the next two years. That came out of the, that was information that was shared with me after I connected with the program officer last month. And similarly, there are different collaboratives and conversations I'm having to see what are some additional opportunities we can unlock that can augment, you know, any city support that we can provide. One thing I will tell you is, I actually need you guys to really make the case for why this is important in addition to, you know, the case we may be making at the council level. Because unfortunately, other things tend to get prioritized, to your point. And we don't tend to have, I feel like the conversation we should be having around culture and the arts. So your advocacy is needed and I will continue to push for that as the commission liaison.
Thank you. I do have a couple of things. Aside from the long-term funding for the arts, a percent for the arts, which is the point of contention, we understand that. There are two other policies, the gift policy and loan policy, and those are both pretty boilerplate. And the reasons that we really need to pass those is for the liability of the city. It's, it is for the safety of the city and for the safety of the art and the artist that created it. And the fact that it just sits there means that the art that is in storage, which technically is worth hundreds of thousands of dollars, is valueless because it is not installed and it is not insured and is not assessed. And so this is important. For a lot of people, these are things that they want to just push to the side because they don't understand the importance of it. But once the art is installed, that is leverage the city can use to gain more money. So by not addressing it, what we're doing is we are losing our ability to protect the city and we are losing our ability to bring in revenue through these arts. And I just wanted to point that out and how important it is. And then how wonderful to hear about the Hewlett Foundation. Thank you so much.
If I may respond regarding the loan and gift policy, I believe the last time Attorney Neb was here, she mentioned that the sister city also had a draft proposal and they're working to perhaps combine the two. So it is on their list. But again, they were, two commissions, at least two commissions have presented draft policies to them.
Thank you. I do want to point out that our loan and gift policy are mandated by the General Plan 2040. So it is-
I will ask tomorrow night, because I can think of at least three different commissions that have pushed things up to the council and they are in this very gray area. We have not seen it. And I, I don't want to make excuses, or I don't want to sound like I'm making excuses, but I do think that at the council level, we also need to provide the space for the city attorney's office to be able to manage the commission work. We've just been like, get this done, get this done, get this done on very, on other areas and in other spaces. And so I do think that, I hope tomorrow night, we're not just talking about the 35 items that have been scoped, that even past council members who are not on the dais wanted to see through and weren't able to see through, but that we can also have a conversation about the commission referrals and the items that are sitting on the queue. And I'll give the city attorney a heads up that I will be asking that tomorrow.
How can, a question for me?
Excuse me, let me just announce that you're-
Okay.
So Commissioner Schaefer?
Thank you. I'm working on procedure, y'all. I'm sorry. How can we advocate what the culture and arts can do for the community? What, where should we be doing that? Is that at city council meetings? How, how do you think we can help with that?
So there's a couple of ways. Number one, you've got a work plan, discussion that's coming up in this meeting. So the things that you feel like you can do through this formal structure to get the word out on how important culture and the arts are, I think should be accounted for in the work plan. And if there's a monetary ask you're making of the council, that should also be a part of the work plan. I also feel like there is a lot of work that can be done, just really elevating issues just in the normal course of just being a member of the community, right? And being a part of other organizations. Like Commissioner Allen is very involved at the museum, always talks about, you know, how important our culture, our history is in those spaces. And so information sharing, partnering with staff on promoting what we do have and who we are as a city, and then using this body to promote that is just as critical. And one thing I was thinking about, and it crossed my mind last month, when I was interviewing applicants a few rounds ago, and I specifically interviewed Commissioner Thorson, she talked about wanting to make art accessible for kiddos. Could we do workshops? Can we have those workshops perhaps happen at the parks, right? So that was a very, when I was hearing her response around that, it made me think about, like, how, how can we create a partnership with GBRD so that when they've got programming, we can lean into that space as a city and make the arts available? It's low cost, you're just putting sweat equity into it, right? And you're getting folks into the fold in ways in which, you know, we just have not in some time. So I would just, not just think small, but also think big and figure out, as an individual, how can I move this forward? And then through this body, how can I, how can we also move this forward?
Thank you. I also wanted to say, I'm, I'm really excited to hear that you guys are encouraging people to rely more on the commissions. Because we are here for you and we are here to help. And it's just wonderful to hear that you want our help. Because so often, I, I think that we're overlooked, you know, all the commissions are. When we have valuable people on our commissions and on our boards that can really, really dive deep and really help you guys a lot more, because I know that you guys are all strapped, we all have regular jobs, we all have our day-to-day lives, and the more hands, the merrier. That's what I say. So thank you for that. That's really great.
Yeah, I served before I was elected to council on commissions for eight years, on code enforcement and on economic development. We did a lot of work for the city on both of those commissions. And most folks didn't know about that work, but we, all 14- And most folks didn't know about that work, but we, all 14, and folks circled in and out, we changed policies, we suggested programs to council, we worked with city staff on initiatives. I was able to look at the budget, or I was able to look at things that were happening, and I was able to say, like, we actually had a role in this. And so in every other city across the state, a well-run city across the state, you see partnerships between the commission and the city council. We've gotten in the habit here where it's like all about the city council. And in my mind, we've got to move away from that. If you've got commissions doing the work, partnering with the council, and a lot of that sausage-making, a lot of those discussions are happening at the commission level, what we ultimately get is not just a good report from staff, but also a good report out from the people who live here and who have their own set of experiences. So I said at a, at a meeting, and I'll end with this, I said at a museum meeting, I think it was with the NAACP, I was doing a report out, and I said that I wanted to make council meetings boring. That was my goal. Because if they're boring, we're flying through agendas, a lot of the work is happening in the commissions, and we're just implementing. By the time it gets to council, we sign off on things, and then we, and staff goes on and implements, right? So that's my personal goal, and I know that a lot of my peers share that sentiment too. So we just have to get to action collectively. So we're working on it.
Thank you. Thank you for the call out to the Vallejo Museum. We're very happy to host the NAACP meetings. And being a part of the community, it, it just, it all permeates through. So each time we hear more good ideas, as an advisory body, all we can do is advise, but you're right, where we can make a difference in the community, we try. So again, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember. Moving on, Commission Secretary Report.
Yes, thank you. First, I'd like to again welcome Commissioner Schaefer. Appreciate you being here. We have a full house now. We have seven appointed commissioners. So looking forward to your input and your area of expertise. I'd like to speak about Measure P. It's not on the agenda, but I know that Councilmember Thorson has been working with Chairman Wise to refine the budget of the Measure P proposal. I have passed it on to the city manager's office. The assistant city manager has reviewed it, had some comments. She asked that I pass it on to Public Works interim director. He had some comments regarding the paint, which we all know that you have to have the right paint for that. Councilmember, not councilmember, Commissioner Thorson and Vice, and Chair Wise are working on refining the budget. Prior to going to Measure P Oversight Committee, we really have to have a, a tight proposal. It's a very good proposal as drafted, just working on the budget. So once that is done, I know Commissioner Thorson has been working, over the summer she worked on it, and so she has reached out to other professionals. So that's my report. And soon as the next steps with that Measure P proposal, I will bring it back to you. End of my report.
Thank you, Staff Taylor. Up next, we have, oh, Commissioner Schaefer.
I just have a question on the proposal. Is there a place we can look at it now, or you're going to bring it back to us later?
I can send you the draft that the commission recommended.
Okay.
But if, actually, if you want to go to the, also the agenda for that-
I did look for that.
I believe it was the June meeting. It was either a June or July meeting.
June 22nd.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You can find it there as well.
Okay, because I did look at the agenda, and I couldn't find it, because I was specifically looking for this.
So if you can't find it, just email me, and I'll send you a copy. Thank you.
Yeah, it was in the July, July meeting as well.
So Commissioner Schaefer, just so you know, all of the agendas and all of the videos are online, and you can look anything up and scroll through them and figure it out.
Yeah, I looked through each one, but somehow I kind of missed the actual proposal. Maybe it was attached and-
And, yeah, and when you go up, when you go and look at the agendas, the first one is just the agenda, the second one down is the whole packet.
The packet.
And you may have only been looking at the agenda, which-
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Appreciate it.
Any other comments? Moving on to presentations and commendations.
We have none, thank you.
Community forum. Manny, is there anybody online?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Currently do not have any members of the public signed up for the community forum at this current time. However, I did start a timer, which is reflected on the top of the corner of your screen, for any interested parties to sign up for the community forum, at which case, feel free to carry on with the agenda. And at the conclusion of that timer, if anyone signs up, I'll let you know.
Thank you so much. We will continue. Next, number seven, is consent calendar and approval of agenda, approval of agenda.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. The approval of the agenda for September 22nd, 2025 was made by Commissioner Allen and seconded by Commissioner Thorson. Roll call. Vice Chair Vidor.
Yes.
Commissioner Thorson.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer. Commissioner Hernandez. It carries five zero unanimously. Thank you.
Next, we have approval of the minutes. A motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes from the July 28, 2025 meeting moved by Vice Chair Vidor, seconded by Commissioner Thorson. Roll call. Vice Chair Vidor.
Yes.
Commissioner Thorson.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer was not here, so you abstain, and Commissioner Hernandez. So passes four to zero with one abstention.
Thank you. Moving on to the action calendar. Item A is inventory storage policy of artwork. In our agenda packet, we have an inventory. Is this the inventory that we put together, or is this-
In the packet was the inventory that was put together a couple of years ago, I believe. I thought I would include it into the agenda packet since we have new commissioners who had not seen the inventory list. This item was brought back. We also have a request by Mr. Doug Darling to speak on it. So the commission can hear Mr. Darling's presentation, because he does have some handouts, and then talk about the invent, oh my goodness, the inventory list, if that's the way you want to proceed.
Any discussion beforehand about the inventory for the arts?
Well, Commissioner Vidor, Vice Chair Vidor, would you like to give a little history of what's in the packet?
So, I need my glasses. We, we put together an inventory of all the public art from the city of, in the city of Vallejo, and it includes the title of the piece, the artist, the location, the date of the gifting, if we have it, which many we do not, and then the type of art it is. There are several pieces of art that are missing, and there are a couple pieces of art that I understand have been either destroyed or fallen apart, one of which is the Space Many of these pieces were part of the Georgia Street Plaza, which was 1969, I think, was developed. And in that, in that space, there were many of the large pieces of public art that were gifted to the city, several of which are worth a great deal of money. There was the Triad, the Space Daisy, the Structure, and Silent Company. The Structure is still installed. It is down on Georgia Street, just across from the Pocket Park, and it's a big wooden structure. And it's, it's a little hidden. The Genius was just re, was, a few years ago, was reinstalled right on the corner here. And that is a piece by Mills, Carl Mills. And that's the one that's on the plinth up, up here on the corner of Santa Clara and Georgia. Space Daisy is no longer with us, my understanding. And Silent Company is currently in storage on Mare Island, I believe at building 535, if I'm not mistaken.
That's where we last saw it.
That's what we saw.
I can't say it's still there, but that's where we last laid eyes on it.
It is a giant monolith, and you would need a giant crane to move it. So I can't imagine that it has been moved without anybody knowing about it. But also, Space Daisy is missing, and that is a giant piece of metal that is also missing, and you would need a giant crane to get that one out as well. The other ones, the Sculptured Wall is the wall that's on the waterfront on the promenade. There are the three busts. Benicia is, was unfortunately stolen, but I believe that she's going to be recast, yes? Or there's a possibility that she will be recast. But then they took down General Mariano Vallejo and Chief Solano, that were also on the plinths out here in front of City Hall. And then the mosaic bench is right out here across the street from the Empress Theater. Several murals around town, many of them were designed by Miro Salazar. What else do we have? And then our utility boxes, which was a really wonderful art project that we did several years ago, where we invited local artists to paint the utility boxes to beautify the city. And that is, I would say, the background of this list.
Correct. The utility boxes were paid through the participatory budget project.
So, any comments?
I think at this time, we'll call for a public comment.
Through the chair, we do have one speaker in person. Doug Darling, please approach the podium.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Welcome, Commissioner Schaefer, to the dais. City staff. So I brought, you have four documents in front of you. Three of them are articles from the Times Herald newspaper, and those never made it into the Marina Vista Report because I didn't know about them at the time. The, so I am here tonight to talk about the art in storage. It's a, it's a long-term issue, about 22 years, if I'm not mistaken. And it's not a new subject for me, but recently, the, I'm on the listserv with the GVRD, and this document here, I highlighted those two sentences because I learned in April about the, before there was ever a Vallejo Recreation District in 1944, in 1937, they had the first ever recreation commission. And when I was reading this staff report, I couldn't help but notice that Luther Gibson and Ernest Wickles were on that commission. So a light went off in my head. So my history with the city of Vallejo has showed me that it's going to be near impossible to get those items reinstalled by the city. They're going to have challenges finding the money, they're going to have challenges finding the incentive to do it. So I've been speaking with Gabe Lanus, general manager at the Recreation District. I've shared some information with him. I wrote up the summary. I have asked him to share that with his board members. And if the idea of GVRD asking the city to relinquish possession of Luther Gibson, Ernest Wickles monument, shame on me, and James Richardson monument. So when I say monuments, these are two three-foot by three-foot by four-foot tall chunks of granite with large, with the large round brass plaque on there. So that's, these are two men that were dedicated, Ernest Wickles and James Richardson, were dedicated by the city of Vallejo. James Richardson was considered a man among men. He was in the redevelopment department early on, had a lot to do with the Marina Vista development. Ernest Wickles is known as Mr. Mare Island. He was very influential. So I'm here tonight to plant a seed, just like I planted a seed with GVRD, okay? And I want to talk to you about my interest in getting the city of Vallejo to relinquish possession of those three items, if GVRD is willing to take them on. And all that plan looks like is that the city would deliver these items to the corp yard at GVRD, and then they become GVRDs. GVRD and my plan would put the James Richardson plaque in Richardson Park.
Time.
Ernest Wickles could go somewhere on Mare Island, wherever GVRD is affiliated with. The Luther Gibson bust, as I told Gabe, I would like to see it removed from the five-foot tall granite pedestal.
Excuse me, Mr. Darling, you, your five minutes is up, but however, does the commission want to give him another minute or two to finish his presentation?
Through the chair, could I make a request to give him a few more time, a few more minutes time?
Let's give him a few more minutes of time, two minutes.
Two more? Wow, okay, thank you. And then the Luther Gibson bust, I would vision the, that was made by Betty Rassacott. It would come off the pedestal. I would urge them to put it inside the main office on a wooden pedestal. Okay? So that's my interest, and I'm here to plant that seed. I hope that if we get to that point, this commission would support the concept of the city gifting these to GVRD, because I think that's probably the only way we may ever get them out of storage. And Silent Company, man, if we ever have a development, this commission hopefully will hold the city accountable to say, look, we, that's the only way Silent Company will ever get reinstalled. Last but not least, the structure is standing, but when they erected it, it was out in the open, like Silent Company was and the Genius and everyone else. It was never intended to be surrounded by buildings like that. I would really hope that with the help of the commission, that it could be dismantled and taken out to Pigeon Park and put on the waterfront when that time comes, and put some lights underneath. So at night, when the ferry comes in, people can see this, this, it's monolithic in itself. Stefan Novak made that. It's a one-of-a-kind. Okay, I appreciate the extra time. That's why I came. If some of you Commissioners I've never met, I don't know, if you're not familiar with the Marina Vista Arts Report, I know Commissioner Allen and Vidor is, please ask Annette, she'll send you a link. Okay? Okay? Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you, Doug.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Darling. Thank you.
So on that discussion, what Doug was talking about was de-assessing the art. And that's one of the reasons why we need this loan and gift policy in place, because that is how we do that. We can't really de-assess it. I mean, the city could just gift it and give it back, but then they're not honestly de-assessing the art and, and passing it along to whoever is going to accept it next. Also, on his point of reinstalling the public art that is in storage, that art has no value until it is installed. Once it is installed, it is worth hundreds of thousands of dollars, which once, once again, can be leveraged to gain more money for the city. It's also going to bring in tourists. As we know, the city of Yountville, there was nothing in Yountville until they brought in restaurants and art. in restaurants and art. They didn't have wine, because they didn't have the soil for it. And so that is what brought people into Yountville. I think that we could do the same thing here. If we build up our art, our public art, that will bring people in, especially when they're coming off of the ferry, they will stop, they will be able to go to the park. If we can develop, if we can develop the park, the South End Park on the waterfront, that would be wonderful. There is $369,000 sitting from a PB project that was supposed to go into the redevelopment of that park. So there is some money available, and there is no other reason why we can't ask for money for, i- if, if the city doesn't have the funds to reinstall the art, I don't know why we can't search around for grants or some sort of support or anything that could get that art reinstalled, so that we can truly understand the value of that art and what it can do for this city. Any discussion?
Through the chair, I'd like to point out that everything that Vice Chair Vidor said can be part of a work plan. And so, as I've pointed out before, this commission has some great ideas, and up until, you know, up until two years ago, you weren't able to really develop a work plan with a budget. The City Council just two years ago allowed the commission to have a budget. So I recommend, it, it's on the agenda for, for the work plan. The next steps for this particular item is, what would you like to do? And if it's like, make this part of your work plan, that can be part of the process, or if there are other suggestions, perhaps at a later date, take another tour of Mare Island to see if those sculptures are still in 535, because I know there have been some movement over there. And even though that, they are large pieces, large pieces, you know, have been, have been moved. So on this particular item, it's just to discuss the next steps, and what would you like the next steps to be, if you want to incorporate Mr. Darling's comments into perhaps your work plan, that can be done as well.
I would be interested in including the inventory and storage in our work plan. I think that's a major part of what we need to do. I, I know the next item is goal-setting and work plan, so I, I feel that we can fold that, fold this agenda item into that agenda item. And I would suggest that we put an ad hoc together, but not until the next agenda item.
A question for, through the chair, for Staff Taylor. Were you making a recommendation or floating the idea of having the newer Commissioners go on to Mare Island to take a look at the art? I've done this three times now, so not to beg off, but I would be curious to see what's made its way over from Mare Island to the corp yard, because some things had done. The, I, some of the artwork that Mr. Darling was talking about, specifically the Luther Gibson bust, again, we've had metal thieves take artwork, recently right out from the, in front of City Hall, Benicia's bust was mentioned. The other ones were saved, and it's my understanding that that is going to, those are going to be either recast in resin or something that would be less likely to be stolen. The originals would be stored either at the museum or at City Hall. I would like to have the, the current Commissioners invited to be a part of the discussion and see, like, see how big Silent Company is, and some of these artworks that we're talking about, that it isn't like the Genius statue of putting it on a plinth. Some of these things are a plinth in themselves, and Silent Company's three actual monoliths.
Five, they're five.
Five, they're five. So again, this would be a part of a larger discussion, but I think they would benefit from being able to be included in the discussion and see it. So maybe that's something, either through the ad hoc or through the new Commissioners, just taking a look at the calendar to see how they could be a part of that.
No, I was suggesting that the full commission go. I, I think that the history that the Commissioners, the more seasoned Commissioners have, I want to say older, the seasoned Commissioners have.
Thank you.
Can help describe the, what's there. I will, it'll probably, it may not be until the new year, given what's on Public Works plant, you know, plate, and see how I can schedule something. But that was my suggestion, because if we're going to talk about artwork, I think three of you know, have seen, I know Commissioner Hernandez, she saw it the last time we did the, the tour, but I know Commissioner Thorson and Commissioner Schaefer hasn't seen it. I don't believe Commissioner Miller saw it. I think she, she was, she, she wasn't appointed, and we haven't had her tour since then. Commissioner Weiss, I don't believe he was here as well. So there are at least, what, four of you who have not seen it, and so that can be something that I will look at arranging. Again, probably not until the new year, but meanwhile, we can carry, you can carry on.
Thank you, Staff Taylor. I think that sounds like an excellent idea, that we all take another tour, field trip, as it were. Yes, and I, I do have, I do have some brochures, so you can actually see what it looks like when it was installed.
Right, and if you recall, those who did the tour, there are two locations, this Mare Island, and then there was the off-site corp yard that had the bust, I believe.
Thank you.
And what I can do is, I don't believe Commissioner Thorson, I don't know if I've sent you the, you've been here a couple of months now, so I don't know if you have the Marina Vista handout. If you don't, I will send that to you and Commissioner Schaefer. I'm pretty certain Commissioner Weiss has it, because I've, I have circulated it a number of times.
No? It's okay. Okay. Great, that sounds like a good idea. And I also have a couple of brochures, the original brochures, that you might want to just look at. They're, they're kind of cool. All right, moving on to Action Calendar Item B, Goal Setting and Work Plan. So we're going to review the proposed goals and proposed fiscal year 2026, 2027 budget for the work plan categories. Discuss next steps to draft, to draft an comprehensive work plan with budget, and consider creation of an ad hoc subcommittee.
Okay, through the chair, in your packet also is a list that Chairman Weiss gave me, a list of price lists. And it's Commission on Culture of the Arts work plan list. And what I did was, from the March meeting, the items that was discussed, brought up in the March meeting, discussed at the April special meeting, grants, Substance of Bloomberg grant, funding outreach to property owners, long-term funding, ideas for public art, attending events, having a booth. And then the other items discussed was working, funding for the work plan, and you just, the Commission discussed produce and print flyers, receipt book, culture in the arts, commission ink-stamped, training, tabling at various events, and $200,000 for a re-granting. So those were items that were discussed, and what the Commission, Commissioners were to bring back was more detail for the work plan. So Commissioner Weiss did submit the calculate, a pricing and estimate for, this is, you can see in the packet, Vice Chair Vidor, her submission was $100,000 to continue getting grant money directly to artists. So her, she reduced it from 100,000, from the 200,000, but that's what we had received in the past. This commission had received $100,000 twice, once from ARPA funds that went to nonprofits, and then $100,000 that went directly to artists, culture and art, and art artists and their programs. And then there's the $50,000 suggestion for reinstallation of public art in storage to preserve city assets. So I believe that the creation of an ad hoc committee is appropriate. I know that the Economic Development Commission created an ad hoc committee. It took them over a year to work on it, but it was a very well-drafted document. And then they revised it just this year. They received, I believe it was $10,000 the first year, then they rolled part of that money over, because they didn't spend it, and then they, they asked for additional funds. I know that Vice Chair Vidor did go online and looked at the presentation to the City Council. I had recommended that everyone do it over the summer. I don't know if everyone has had a chance, but if in fact, as Councilmember Matias has said, that this commission is to be taken seriously, and the work to be taken seriously, you have to have a serious plan, and a responsible plan, a well-thought-out plan with reasonable funding. I think this commission has the ability to do that. We've talked about it for years. You have proof to show that you can do the re-granting. And so the other items regarding tabling, going to conferences, things of that nature, as Vice Chair Vidor has pointed out a couple of times, that she and I, and then Commissioner Sawandi, went to an event in San Francisco. So if in fact you know of conferences or events that's usually by car, it's expensive, you fly by plane, so if you think of items, conference you may want to go to, tabling events that you want to go to, some of them cost, some of them are free, things of that nature, that's, I think, can be discussed this evening in more detail, and if appropriate, create the ad hoc subcommittee.
Thank you, Staff Taylor. My question for everybody is, should we have a goal-setting prior to developing an ad hoc, so that we can coalesce all of our ideas and then give them to the ad hoc, who will then massage it into something like this, which is the Economic Development Commission, their, their work plan? It's very well put together, albeit very large script.
Readable.
Readable, especially for my old eyes. So that's, that was great. So is that, is that an idea that we, that we would like to discuss? When is our, when is our next work plan? I mean, our next general, sorry, goal-setting?
Normally, goal-setting is once a year. We've had our goal-setting this year. What you can do is have a special meeting where the work plan is the only item on the agenda. Yeah, because goal-setting, you don't have to necessarily do goal-setting every year. If you have a work plan that is a multi-year work plan, you, you don't necessarily have to have goal-setting every year. What you can do is at a meeting discuss, you know, amending it, editing it, finding out where you are in it. But you've had goal-setting already this year, you're in the process of drafting the work plan, so I recommend if you want to have your, let's say, October meeting, because we don't meet in November, because if Thanksgiving, unless you do a special meeting, perhaps your October meeting, you, you'd want to look at just having the one item on the agenda.
Yep. Commissioner Hernandez?
Well, whenever, if we do have a special, session just for goal-setting, I would like to be part of the ad hoc to help put it together, because I still have all of the previous year's things, plus all my notes, and, you know, plus, plus everything that we were going to say per slide, that we were going to present, you know? But we were not always given the opportunity to do it, because it changed up sometimes. I think we were preparing for it, and then they said, no, we're not going to do it that way, we're just going to receive it. And then they changed it again towards, like, only one presenter, or, I don't know, it was something.
It was the staff. It's, uh, two, three years ago, when Vice, I apologize, through the chair, when Vice Chair Vidor was chair, right, staff supported the Commissioners. Commissioners were able to do the PowerPoint presentation. Then that changed where now staff makes the presentation, and the Commissioners are there to respond to questions. That's how it is now. If, if you go online, you would notice that the, the Economic Development staff person made the presentation, and the Commissioners were actually online, they were, they weren't present, they were, they zoomed in. So again, the PowerPoint, for the two years that this Commissioner did it, it was done very well, well-received. This year is a little different, because you can attach funding to it. And so I suggest that you bring your ideas with a reasonable amount of funding for what you think you can do in one year. One of the things that happened with the Economic Development Commission, they were not able to spend the full $10,000 the fir, that first year, so they had to come back and ask for those funds to be rolled over. It would be great if in fact, this commission could, whatever money that may be received, can spend it, and then the next year, you can ask for additional funding.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Is there a document about the goal-setting that's taken place already? You said you have some stuff. Is there anything that I can review about what goal-setting has been done?
Oh.
I'll bring it, bring it. Yeah, there you go.
Is there any, any documents about the goal-setting that's been done previously that I can review?
Through the chair. Every year, we do a goal-setting plan, so that we, we have to present a work plan for what our plans are for the year to City Council. And then apparently, City Staff is going to be presenting it, so we have to make it presentable for City Staff to present.
Well, to respond to your question, I can look at the dates that, it went to council, and you can, and you can review that.
Okay.
Because I don't remember the dates offhand.
Commissioner Allen, did you have a?
Sorry, through the chair, thank you. Having been through a few of these, I don't need to take up any more mic time, I don't need the spotlight on me, I'm happy to not be on the ad hoc, this isn't ducking, but it sounds like this is going to take us into next year. The only thing I will say is, perhaps it would be, if we're mindful of the fact that this commission, though not many of us on it currently, did a lot of work and did a pilot round, where money was given to individual artists, nonprofit groups, community groups to support culture and arts, $50,000, and there was another $100,000, and because it was ARPA funds, these were federal funds, they could not go into individuals, they had to go to institutions, 501(c)(3) nonprofits. It was suggested that in order to- It was suggested that in order to get $100,000 in the hands of artists, it would have to come out of the general fund. Again, whether this is Measure P, or there's some other pocket of money, or you, sorry, gesturing. Vice Chair Vidor had mentioned the funds for the park, right, that came through, help me out here.
The PB?
PB, participatory budgeting, that there were some other funds, but I wanted to just perhaps think about uncoupling, in the equation, something that's already been done well, and I just, I keep reminding myself of Askari Sawande, she came up with a wonderful list of all the groups that this institution advised the city council to fund, those exist. I'd love to just punt this and have this at the heart of the work, whether it's $100,000, I would advocate for $200,000 to be given out, but I'm also mindful of the fact that this city's going through a budgetary process, and it's challenging, and everything else that's going on in the world, the arts are not at the foremost of everyone's mind of what needs to be supported. Artists often are the ones that are thrown out of the balloon first when it comes to funding and everything else. So I keep coming back to this, that you've all done this well. The commission has done the $100,000 giveaway in lieu of not being able to spend $10,000, as Economic Development didn't. I would say that this is a wonderful opportunity, knowing that this money will be spent well and given to organizations that have either proved themselves in the past and have been past recipients, or are already challenged to work with the city in other ways to do that. So just the concept of maybe uncoupling that from something that hasn't been done or needs a lot more discussion about how to do this new other part of it, but just realize that there's a legacy that represents the work of, say, the late Rabbi Finkelstein and other people who really worked hard on this to make that work. So some of these are apples and oranges. I just want to be mindful of the fact that this has worked before, it can work again.
Okay, through the chair, if I may, you can phase your work plan. So if in fact your highest priority is re-granting, and you ask for either 100,000 or 200,000, that would be phase one. And then you can have phase two, because that may take six months, a year, whatever, to get that out, because you may, as we did in the past, a third-party nonprofit to manage the applications, things of that nature. And then for a second phase, you may want to look at training, conferences, and let's say, training conferences, and outreach or tabling. So that may be something that doesn't take a lot of money, but you have proven yourself with the re-granting, here's, you know, this is something else that we want to do to help educate ourselves and to do outreach, and so that's another phase of your work plan. And then the third phase would be perhaps the art, the installation of the art, because I think that may take the longest, and as I've always said to this commission, let's go off the low hanging fruit first, and then do the harder stuff, you know, the more perhaps difficult things to get through, but then that way you have proven yourself that you can do your work plan. So perhaps you want to, however you want to phrase it, but that's a suggestion.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Let's get this right. I definitely want to be on the ad hoc committee, and I'm really interested in adding other things for submission, like ways that we can promote via the web and social media and things like that. So I'm definitely.
Okay, through the chair, what every commissioner can do, you don't have to wait for the subcommittee, the original plan was each commissioner was to bring their ideas, and then the subcommittee was going to look at the ideas. So tonight, you could, each commissioner can make suggestions of what may, they may want to see as part of the work plan, and then those ideas then can be looked at by the subcommittee and brought back to the full commission. So, because we do have time, some time left, so I know that Commissioner Thorson has not been able to give her recommendations yet, and Commissioner Schaefer are the two. So if you want to do that at this time, and it's just something, you throw out ideas, and then they'll be vetted later.
I'm going to start. So the ideas that I put out were the $100,000 in grant money for individuals and individual organizations here in Vallejo. And one of the reasons I chose $100,000, I know we were talking about $200,000, is because I felt like $100,000 is what we've gotten in the past, and so the likelihood of us getting it again is very high. And then I'm not saying that we shouldn't ask for 200, I'm saying that 100,000 for that particular program, and then adding $50,000 for potential reinstallation of the art. And then I didn't want to, you know, take up all of the money, I thought that other people might have other ideas, and so I was like, I'm just going to put in these two ideas for right now, because, you know, there'd be more input and more people coming in with ideas and use of funds. Commissioner Schaefer.
I just wanted to ask a question about the 100,000. Is that a total 100,000, and there's different artists and institutions that you give to? It's not just one?
Okay. So it's a, it's a, it's a vetted, no, re-granting, it's a re-granting, but proposals are given to us, and then we get an ad hoc together that usually includes at least one community member as well, and they go through all of the proposals, and they decide which ones, and they vet them, and they make the decision on who gets the money and who doesn't get the money. And in the past, people have gotten exactly what they've asked for, and also in the past is, they, we have decided to split up, or, you know, the committee has decided to split up the money, however, you know, and so that people didn't get exactly what they asked for, but everybody got something. And so, so there's many different ways that we can do it, and we do it usually through a nonprofit. The nonprofit is the one that disseminates the money for us. So there's different ways to do it, and if you go on our website, if you go on the website and you go to our commission page, there are some posters there, and you can see who has gotten the granting in the past as well.
Thank you.
I'm, I am, considering that there's two people not here, I'm wondering if we should wait until, we should do the goal, we should do a special meeting next, in October, and discuss ideas that people have? Or I don't know if it's possible for us to develop an ad hoc and then have them submit ideas to us, because that might violate the Brown Act.
No, well, I don't think it's a violation of the Brown Act. Perhaps this meeting, those of you who are here, you've already submitted your ideas, I don't know if anyone else has any other ideas that you made, and so that would be as part of the minutes for the October meeting. In October, if anyone has any more ideas, if Chair Wise and Commissioner Miller have ideas, they can be added, then the ad hoc can be created in October and brought back in December. I was thinking about special meeting, but I need to take some time off around the holidays, and so, so this meeting, for those of you who have ideas, and they don't have to be grandiose ideas, they could be just simple ideas, you don't have to have necessarily a lot of thought behind them right now, just, you know, what you think that may, you may want to see, and then more discussion at the October meeting. Because what I will do, as I've done in the past, is just a list, just a list, and then you discuss it, then Chair Wise and Commissioner Miller can add their, theirs, and that can be discussed at the October meeting, ad hoc committee, ad hoc subcommittee created, look at, and then the subcommittee, if you want, can meet in November, because it'll be three or less, it won't be a quorum, so the ad hoc committee can meet and be prepared for December.
That's an excellent idea. Commissioner Schaefer.
Okay, I never turned it off, so sorry. So my idea around the website is not just the website, it's also maybe having a mobile app where you can do walking tours of this, of the artwork that's there. Just being able to push out what we're doing and really putting Vallejo on the map, and even in the zones that we're talking about during mules, maybe there's also some digital kind of stuff where we can, we can promote health in Vallejo and education in Vallejo on bigger screens or something. I'm just throwing stuff, I'm really throwing stuff out there, but, you know, just, I don't know if you all are familiar with Pokemon Go?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Doing some stuff like that with Vallejo, you know, as far as art, historical, people's, like open studios and things like that. I think that putting some of that in the work plan around technology also promotes it, Vallejo on a wider scale. So I just wanted to put that in.
Commissioner Thorson.
Through the chair. I think that that would be great, especially in our advocacy work. And additionally, Councilmember Matias mentioned partnering with GBRD for art workshops for kids. I think that could be something that we could easily sponsor and partner with local organizations as well, which would be great.
Yeah, I would also like to propose bringing in a grant writer. I mean, we have a grant writer for the city, and I know that federal grants are not going to be available, but there are other grants, and if the Hewlett Foundation has committed to some funds, they might be committed, they might be willing to commit some more. So I think grant writing, but part of grant writing is paying for a grant writer, so that's, that would be a bit of a fund there. Commissioner Schaefer.
The Hewlett grant, that is to the city of Vallejo specifically, or is it to this committee? I mean, this commission.
It's not for us.
Through the chair, it's not to the city, it's to a nonprofit organization that's created that then distribute the funds. It's not, the city of Vallejo is not involved with that.
So is it arts? I mean, what is the, what is the Hewlett grant? Yeah, what is it for?
Through the chair?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. It's, you can, if my memory serves, it is, it's administered through the Center for Cultural Innovation, and that entity manages the grant, and there will be a call for applications at some point for, from Vallejo artists, individual artists and cultural institutions. And once that call for applications closes, I think that they will be, you know, making, making the decision and awarding those grants through that organization. Does anyone have anything else to add?
Full disclosure, the Vallejo Museum was in fact recipient of one of these grants a while ago. It was specifically for BIPOC programming and centering or sort of decolonizing and talking about true history, working with the museum, working along the phrase of not about us, without us, and that specifically was what that grant was used for. But it had nothing to do with this advisory body, or the city, or the city funds. I would come back to the re-granting since it's along similar lines, and if we're really talking about 100,000 instead of 200,000, that you had mentioned, who do we partner with, or is it 100,000? We had worked with Vallejo Center for the Arts back when they were Vallejo Community Arts Foundation, BCAF, and then we worked with the Solano County Arts Council to then be the 501(c)(3) that redistributed the funds. I would encourage us to be thinking about if it's 100,000, that we would need another 10% or 20%, depending on what they would take, so maybe it's 120,000, so that we can give away 100,000, just be mindful of that, and also to be thinking in terms of a possible match, if the granting opportunities align with Hewlett's giving outlines for what they would like to do and see to be supporting in Vallejo, that maybe there's an opportunity, if not in this round and next round, to advise the city to specifically match funds with Hewlett so that artists and nonprofits here in Vallejo can get double the amount. And again, none of that goes to this commission, we can't receive it, it all has to go through a nonprofit.
Right.
Is that clear? Okay, thanks.
Yeah, through the chair, these are all great ideas, and I'm asking that whatever idea you have, you send that to me, and I will, and I will create the list. So whatever ideas, and please don't send it to me the day of the meeting, or that Sunday before the meeting, at least, please be conscious of my workload, and if you can do it like within the next week, that would be great, because I do staff another commission which meets on the first Monday. So I appreciate that you would do that, perhaps in the next week, no later than two weeks, send me the list of ideas, and I'll comprise it and have it ready for the next meeting.
Yes, ma'am. Would you prefer us to send these items to you directly, or through the chair, or through the head of the committee?
To me directly.
To you, okay.
To me directly, please.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts? And this, Commissioner Schaefer, this is where we just throw out ideas, right? I mean, that's the whole idea, is for us to just, anything that we can think of, you know, I mean, if we use it, we use it, if we don't, we don't, and that's fine, you know, but every iron in the fire, that's my attitude.
Plus, the ideas may be combined to something larger, because you may not, you're speaking of, you know, apps and that nature, which may go well with another commissioner's idea with something to, you know, get the information out. So the only thing that I ask is that you send it to me, and, actually, I'm going to give you a deadline.
That's the spirit.
Deadlines are important. Thank you, Steph Taylor.
I would like this, this is the 22nd, the 29th, no later than October, the first Monday in October, which is, I believe, the 5th, the 6th. So if you can do it by next week, you get a star. If you do it two weeks, you get a C minus, so. So, so, so please, because it's important, and I'd like to be able to comprise it, and if in fact you have any ideas regarding a budget that goes with it, that's even better.
I think a budget is a very important part of it. I don't know if any of you have had a chance to look at the Economic Development Commission's work plan, but it is robust, and I think that we should develop something equally as robust. I don't think that it should be just one of these ideas, I think it should be all of these ideas, and how can we use all, how can we incorporate all of these ideas together to, you know, create a full work plan for a year that may extend beyond a year, you know, with ideas that we might have. I also would be interested in being on the ad hoc, but... I also would be interested in being on the ad hoc, but, you know, we'll see next month. Commissioner Schaefer?
I also think that somewhere in the work plan, it's really about partnerships, and how we can partner with other commissions and, you know, bring some of these ideas. So, you know, if they're getting budget, you know, we can work together to really, you know, bring this stuff forward.
Thank you. And to Councilmember Mateus's point, I, I think that part of this work plan should be about how the city council can lean on us and what they can use us for, you know, how, how we can help them in, in their goals as well. And I know that they have many goals, and they may not think that their goals are part of arts and culture, but in my point of view, everything is part of arts and culture. And there's no reason why we can't, you know, partner with the city and with organizations and with other commissions to make all of this happen all together, all at once. Everything, everywhere, all at once.
Yeah, through the chair, the city council has not set a date for their goal setting yet. So this year's, they have not set their goals, they have goals from last year. Economic development is always a top priority. I mean, that's such a broad-based topic. But that's why this commission is under economic development, because art is economic development. And again, regarding partnering and sharing budgets, the only commission that really has a budget right now is Economic Development Commission. And they also, part of their work plan or their discussion was to create a, I believe it was an art project, art and culture project. So I think in the future, this commission can not only partner with Economic Development Commission, but the Beautification Commission, as well as the Sister City Commission. So perhaps once we have a work plan, that might be one of your goals in the work plan, is to partner with those other commissions for a goal-setting of those commissions. Maybe you want to take the lead in that, to say, how can the four of us or the five of us commissions, whatever the commissions are that are selected, can work on a culture and arts, beautification, safety, so forth and so on. So that might be something you want to think about in the future.
Excellent. I think that should be touched upon in the work plan a little bit.
And GVRD as well.
Oh, definitely GVRD, yeah. In the past, when we did the Bloomberg Grant, which we did not get, but the grant itself, the proposal that we made was fantastic. And, you know, part of it I brought back for the Measure P funds, that has to do with, you know, every neighborhood in Vallejo has a neighborhood park. Plus, there are four major parks by the GVRD, as well as other amenities that the GVRD manages. So they, I think that they are a wonderful group to org, to partner with. I know Vallejo Shakespeare and the Park, you know, we are a program of the GVRD. And Perform in Hans Park, a park that people weren't going to. And we brought the plays, and they brought in the disc golf, and they completely transformed the park. So I, I think that, that there are things that we can do to improve various areas of Vallejo that probably need a lot of attention. And we can do it through arts and culture and beautification and, you know, other, other events that, that will bring people out and get the community together.
Yes, through the chair. This has been a very good meeting, and now you have to get to work. And so it's wonderful, because as artists, you have great ideas and are very creative. And I'm not saying that in a negative sense, but as you know, pen to paper. And that's, that's the next step for this commission. So we'll see how committed you are, if you send the list, if you don't, but I'll get the list that tells me how committed you are or not.
Commissioner Schaefer?
I got two, two things. One, how many people can be on the ad hoc committee? Is there a limited number?
Three.
It's only three, okay. Yeah, 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 that's, I, I knew that it was less than this, but I didn't know how many. One thing that we, I'm from Detroit originally, and one thing we did when Detroit was going through Renaissance period before it went, went into decline, they had, every week during the summer, they would have a cultural arts festival. And like you're doing the Philippine Festival, but they would have a different culture every week. And so you would have Mexican, and you would have, and so I think maybe that's something we could partner with other commissions to, to do something like that. And because Vallejo is known for its diversity, it puts Vallejo on the map for that. So I just wanted to put that out there too.
That sounds like a great idea. You know, we have our Second Friday Art Walks. So every month, we have our Second Friday Art Walks, and oftentimes, they will have different focuses on their art walks as well. So that would also be a great organization to partner with. And, you know, get, get more things happening on our Second Friday Art Walks in terms of the cultures, the different cultures in Vallejo.
Absolutely.
As well, that's a great idea, yeah. Commissioner Hernandez?
I was just gonna say that, since there's only three people that could be on an ad hoc, if I could donate my notes, everything that I have, just so if it's gonna be helpful in structuring, you know, what, all the information, but then at least it gives us some examples of how to do it, what it looks like at the end. So that way, we know how to properly structure them in phases. Now that we know that we have to, it's best to include every dollar amount with every single idea that we have, because that's the only way they're gonna look at it seriously. So things like that, I mean, I have everything from when I was here. Because when I was sitting as chair, I, I took a lot of notes. I wanted to make sure I included everybody's ideas. I didn't want anybody to be left out, because it was all really important. So I wanted to make sure that it was all done and looked at seriously. So, but I could even show you at the end of our meeting, some of the things, just so you could get a mental structure of, of what we were talking about.
And through the chair, the two of you can get together to discuss your notes, because that's not a quorum. Getting back to Commissioner Schaefer's idea about a festival every month or every week, the City of Vallejo, we do have a grant for nonprofits that, like Vallejo Main Street has received funding, the Fiesta de Padres that happened, I think that was last week, received funding. So there, there is X amount of dollars, and that is funded out of the city manager's office. And it has now, it's, it's, it's an RFP you have to apply for, it's competitive, and then there is a panel who reviews the applications. So we do have, it's not that this commission, this commission does not give festivals. The city really doesn't give festivals. We fund organizations and nonprofits to, to put on the festivals. And so, so that may be a little different than what happened in Detroit. This, this commission is advisory to the city council. The city council then has, past few years, provided funding to, to give to nonprofits through grants for activities. So that's how that would work.
Thank you. Any other comments on goal-setting work plan? Okay, so we are proposing that we are presenting our ideas to Annette, and Annette, Staff Taylor will coalesce all of our ideas and bring it back to our October meeting, and then we will decide on an ad hoc at that time. Okay. So no motion is made at this time, then? No motion? No, okay. Thank you. Moving on to the future agenda items, there's artist registry on that list. This is where, if you have something that you would like to discuss in the future, you can make a suggestion, and it can be put on the agenda for a future agenda item. Does anybody have any suggestions? Commissioner Allen?
Through the chair. A brief suggestion, and it's rather fortuitous that you're here. Looking at the city's website, specifically the Culture and Arts Commission's presence on the website, I love the fact that all the artists and, and organizations that were funded through the regranting programs, I keep harping on this, are mentioned there. I would want to make sure that every one of them has a link to them, if they're still in extent, and that maybe that could also be another place in the work plan to have an ongoing presence on the web, out there, outward facing to the public, and possibly any angel donors who are sick of us going, we're just an advisory body, we can't make these wonderful ideas happen because we don't have any money. If someone was willing to step up through that, maybe there's a portal that would be specifically funding either the nonprofit that is working with us, whether that's the Solano County Arts Council, or VCA, or whoever else. Maybe there's a way to allow people to donate directly to previous grantees, or someone that's been vetted in the Culture and Arts Commission's opinion that someone should get the money. I would love to have maybe a discussion about how the web can work in that way. And it seems like you'd be a wonderful person to, as a resource. I know it's working for free, but it's one of those things where I know that you could educate us on how best to go forward in that respect.
Okay, through the chair. Commissioner Allen, to use the city website to donate to a third party may not be something the city is able to do. That would be a question for the city attorney's office. So as-
Properly chastise, yes. Obviously, I'm not advocating we do something that is either illegal, or is something we're not supposed to be doing, or the city has things in place to do that. It was just really about the website and, and making sure that we can have an active, ongoing web content. We were just throwing out ideas about how to fundraise for all these wonderful ideas that we, everyone has.
Right, you could put that as part of your work plan suggestion, and then we run up the flag. We have a, in the City of Vallejo, we have a public information officer, and we had a community outreach officer, unfortunately, who's leaving us. But I know that the Economic Development Commission have worked on their website. We can, as, each commission can work on their website, that's why we have the list that's there. If, in fact, you want to have other content, that's something that can be part of the work plan. We then would work with the IT people and the public information officer, if we have a, if we do hire another community outreach officer, then we would work together on getting that done.
Thank you. In the past, in, on, just to piggyback on the, the Vallejo Weekly and the website, in the past, we have submitted article ideas for the Vallejo Weekly on artists, and I'd like to bring that back, where we all choose artists and culture, cultural institutions in the, in Vallejo, and we do a feature on them, and we send it to the Vallejo Weekly, and they will print it. And they were doing this, I think, once a month, they were doing an artist focus?
Correct. I mean, that, as, as long as it lasts, it was very good. But if you recall, the, the issue was getting the information from the artists or the nonprofit. The ones that were done had pictures, and it really is, you do like a bio of the artists, submit pictures of their artwork, things of that nature. And we did it for a few months, and it was well-received, but what happened, again, commissioners get busy, they do the outreach, and you don't get the response from the artists. I think everyone thought this would be a great way to highlight the artists, and it was, until it wasn't. And the reason because it wasn't is because they could not get the information from the artists or the organizations. So I would suggest if you want to do that, again, put it part of the work plan, you can, you can add that to the work plan. And then maybe be not as ambitious as, you know, once a month, but whenever you can get one, then put it in the newsletter, Vallejo Weekly, because it does have to be scheduled. Because really, now, if you notice, they really don't do a lot of that type of articles, highlighting people.
They will.
I'm, I'm just saying, right now, they don't.
I know.
And so if, as part of the work plan, you know? We can't say that they will or won't, but as part of the work plan, we could request that, because the format is different now. It's much different than what it was in the past.
I, I do know that they are asking for articles, and they are asking for input and more information. They, they do want something for Hispanic Heritage Month this month. So if, if we can get them something, they would definitely, I know that Robert would definitely want to print something like that, because he asked me for that, so.
Yeah, and they could go through the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's a simple-
Yeah.
Ask them.
He specifically wanted people from Vallejo who were in Vallejo that we knew. So-
And then again, the Vallejo Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, he hasn't asked me, but I can give him contacts for, I went to a opening of a Guamanian, no, it wasn't Guamanian, Guatemalan restaurant last week.
The one on Sonoma?
The one on the Sonoma, the food is really good there. And so they had a very good turnout. So there are people who, if, if Robert doesn't know who, who they are, he can reach out to me, and I can connect him with the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce.
Also, I know that the Naval and Historical Museum has a Hispanic Heritage exhibit now, and there might be some artists there that would want to be included as well.
I don't want to anticipate the next one, which is announcements. So are we off of item 9A? Are we still doing?
Any other future agenda items that anybody wants to suggest? No? Okay. We are moving on to number 10, announcements. Commissioner Allen?
Through the chair, you anticipated. The Vallejo Naval and Historical Museum, or the Vallejo Museum, your museum, is celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month, which is, of course, September 15th through October 15th. We are actually extending the exhibit as well for at least a week, if not two. And then we'll be transitioning to the open studio, which is all of the individual artists, visual artists, that we then host for free at the museum on the November 8th and 9th as part of that. And we will be doing something new, working with a totally different group of artists, for the Tiny Art Show in the rotunda of the museum. It's all small canvas work, it's stuff that's been done at Alibi Bookshop before, for those who know. A lot of the individual artists, sometimes it's their first show, and so it's one of those opportunities to get back to the community, so. But yes, Hispanic Heritage Month, and I will pass this on to some of the individual folks, artists involved with that, to make sure that they get some much-needed exposure. So thank you for that, Vice Chair Fedor.
Excellent, thank you. Any other announcements? Arts happening in Vallejo? I know that as we head towards the holiday season, the next big event coming up is gonna be Halloween, I believe. And then, of course, we have Thanksgiving and Christmas, but-
Yes, but Dia de los Muertos.
Oh, Dia de los Muertos as well, yes. So, moving on, since no other announcements, we have, our next scheduled meeting is October 27th. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you. Oh, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourn at 7:49. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.